State of the Union President, I'd like to call this Simpson City Council Work Session to Order. The time is about six P M. Please remember to place your cell phones and all electronic devices in silent mode in order to prevent any disruptions in today's meeting. All right, we'll call Ms. Hanbury.
Councilmember Watts?
Yeah.
Councilmember Eubry?
Here.
Councilmember Harry?
Here.
Councilmember Lawshe?
Here.
Mayor Van Hook?
Here. All right, six for six. All right, minutes of meetings of March, May seventeenth and May nineteenth, where you know these councilmembers are barred to tonight's meeting. Uh, please take an additional moment to review before I open it up for discussion.
Excuse me, Mayor, the seventeenth, we're not quite ready, so we only have the regular session.
Will they be sent out before Thursday?
We are, we're not sure.
All right, there's not that much on the nineteenth, so I'm gonna go for discussion on the nineteenth, and then we'll have, try to have the seventeenth by next, before next meeting, so we all can end up with discussion, and then we'll vote on it. Is there any discussion on the nineteenth, minutes, Councilmember Joyce?
None.
Councilmember Harry?
None.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Watts?
None.
Councilmember Lawshe?
None.
All right, so minutes from May nineteenth will be up for approval at Thursday night's regular session. All right, no presentation this evening. Ms. Hanbury, do you have a decision comments on supply services, services and or affairs of the city?
Yes, sir.
All right, moving on along. Tonight, we have one ordinance up for discussion, which is ordinance A, and reasons follows, an ordinance prohibiting careless driving in Sims, Alabama. All right, this time I'll ask Chief Friend to come forward and present ordinance A to the council. Hey, Chief.
Good evening. So, this ordinance allows us to actually write municipal tickets instead of a state ticket for the offense of careless driving, uh, which is covered under, uh, basically reckless driving under the state code. So, it'll allow us to write a municipal ticket and keep it in-house, uh, instead of having to send everything to the state. Uh, so that'll allow us to write different violations for, um, the definition of careless driving here in Sims.
All right, um, discussion, Councilmember Joyce?
Um, well, no, just, uh, thanks to the chief, um, who brought this to the public safety committee and, um, which was, uh, supportive of, of doing this, and, um, it helps make, uh, traveling around Sims, um, safer, so, uh, a good idea, and, um, all four.
Hey, Councilmember? Councilmember Harry?
Uh, none further to add.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Watts?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lawshe?
None.
All right, thanks, Chief. All right, ordinance A will be up for approval at Thursday night's regular session. All right, that's it for the ordinances this evening, we'll have one, but we do have seven resolutions up for discussion. Before we get started, I'd like to ask for our motion to amend tonight's agenda to add an eighth resolution, will be resolution H.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Joyce, same by Councilmember, um, sorry, Harry. Any discussion on the current motion, Councilmember Joyce?
None.
Councilmember Harry?
None.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Watts?
None.
Councilmember Lawshe?
None.
All right, Ms. Hanbury, we record the vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yeah.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawshe?
Yes.
Mayor Van Hook?
Yes. All right, motion to approve the amendment for, the amendment of tonight's agenda has been approved. First resolution is resolution A, and raises follows. A resolution to award contract to D R C Emergency Services LLC for debris removal. This time I'll ask Mr. Franklin to present resolution A to this council. Mr. Franklin?
All right, good evening.
Good evening.
This is the contract that we, uh, do every year, every couple of years for emergency services when we have a hurricane or a, uh, emergency event, and we have to get help getting debris off the streets, so. We used this contract a couple of times last year, um, with Zeta, Sandy?
Sally.
Um, so, a lot of times, and even in this case, that, there's so much debris, there's too much for our crews to handle, um, we need specific type of equipment to do this, but, um, this is D R C Emergency Services, they're, actually, they're contractor that's had it for the last several years. Um, they did a very good job last year, their law enforcement, they're very responsive, they, and they kept in contact with us, and, and the good thing about it is they already know, um, the way FEMA likes things, so they're familiar with the process, which made it a whole lot easier for us. Um, they were the only contractor to bid on the job. We put it in the paper, we advertised it, and this, places that we're supposed to advertise it, we just couldn't get any, we even reached out to some contractors, didn't get a lot of response, or didn't get any more response. Uh, but we did verify that the contract that we awarded, uh, to them, it was two or three years ago, is the same exact prices, and so, there's not really a lump sum price, they give you prices per item, so it might be, uh, per ton, or X amount of dollars per, uh, ton of, uh, just like, uh, tree debris, or stumps, or whatever the case may be, so there's not really a total number we can give you. It's gonna depend on the amount of material that we have. And this, this company is also the same company that, I believe, Mobile County, or the city of Mobile used last year, because they're a reputable company. And, um, so anyway, this is all I wanted to put in for it, so I feel pretty good about it anyway.
Mr. Franklin, any discussion, Councilmember Joyce?
Um, no, I mean, if we use them successfully and, um, didn't have any issues, my only question is, um, what's the, this is for their services to come pick up, what's the monitoring, the service that's a separate?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's separate, um, we actually put that up for bid too, but didn't get any response, so I'm, uh, checking around with some companies to see if I can get some people to, to do that as well.
And we have, and we have to have that for?
Well, you, it, it's helpful to have, if not, we have to supply somebody to go around with the debris guys, and monitor everything they're doing, record everything, and put it into the system through FEMA, so. It's, you could do it, but it's very time consuming, and it's better somebody that knows how to do it does it, so, we're gonna reach out and try to get some, some people to, uh, reinvent it.
We may have to reach out to the people that were doing it in the past, that haven't, haven't been unsuccessful.
Right, no, I just remember we had the, little invoice that, uh, so, I was just wondering.
Hey, one of the things to say is, the last time we did this contract, it's one of those contracts that you can, um, take and correct me along, but I think it's one of these deals where you could, you could, uh, renew it every three years or something like, or every year for up to three years.
Up to three years.
And so, we got to our third year, that's the reason we had to take it out for bid.
That's correct. Councilmember Harry?
Uh, my experience with what they did last year, they worked very fast, and were very efficient, you know, getting everybody up and running again, and, uh, getting the streets cleaned off.
We're still hoping we don't have to use them this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
I do, yeah.
Councilmember Eubry?
Not yet, sir.
Councilmember Watts?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lawshe?
Well, doing that keeps you, other people, you regular workers, for you to do what you need them to do.
There was Franklin, sorry. All right, uh, discussion, no further discussion, resolution A will be up for approval on Thursday night's regular session. Next is resolution B, and raises follows, a resolution amending resolution twenty twenty-one dash sixty to amend the pay scale and classification plan for employees of the city of Sims. This time I'll ask Chief Brooks to present resolution B to the council. Chief, how are you, sir?
Hey, how are you?
Good.
This resolution is, uh, to amend, um, the pay scale and classification plan for, uh, two fire department, uh, positions. One is, uh, for administrative assistant. Um, a couple of weeks ago, I lost my E M A coordinator, which did a lot of administrative, uh, assistant duties, and, uh, so, I, I was looking, uh, in the classification titles, and we had no administrative assistant under fire, so, we would like to add that position in there, uh, under the assigned grade of, uh, five, and then, I'm looking to hire a deputy chief of training to oversee our training, and, uh, if hopefully, uh, the council approves the R T C, um, this week, um, to oversee that too, facilitate, schedule that training. So, um, that position deputy chief actually takes the place of our safety and training captain that we had listed. Uh, the pay grade will stay the same at seventeen, so, um, that's what this resolution is wanting to do. Any questions?
So, basically, anytime that we add a position that, that the council has approved of the classification, like, scale, then we will, uh, pray before council from here on out to get approved for a new positioning, and that's what we're doing today, not only that, with the salary that goes along with it. All right, any, uh, any discussion, Councilmember Joyce?
Uh, thank you, Chief. Um, I think you had mentioned before that, uh, the regional training center noted that that position was lacking, and that we needed that, so I think that just makes sense, um, moving, moving forward. And then, one question, so the E M A coordinator left, but now we're doing, you're doing a administrative assistant, are you gonna replace the, um, position of E M A coordinator and have two different people, or how does that work?
We had that discussion, I think we're gonna leave it in there for, if we do that in the future, but right now, we're gonna delegate those duties out, and, uh, not replace, um, that position right now.
Thank you. Councilmember Harry?
Seems like, uh, you know, the next step's, uh, getting certified prior training, so this is really exciting.
Councilmember Eubry?
Nothing.
Councilmember Watts?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lawshe?
Can make fire, ball, we're good.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chief, sorry, I'll keep. Okay, fine, resolution C, resolution C, right?
Resolution B.
That was B. Resolution B will be up for approval at Thursday night's regular session. All right, next is resolution C, and raises follows. A resolution granting business license exemption for vendors participating in the Sims Farmer's Market each Thursday during the month of June twenty twenty-two.
Motion for immediate consideration?
I'm gonna have, I'm asking for that after Chief presents it.
Oh.
Go ahead, Ms. Loveley, we present resolution C to the council.
So, everyone in Sims is one of Farmer's Markets, so we reached out to tons of farmers and people that had, um, backyard, um, like, growth, you know, things that they were growing in the backyard that they wanted to sell, and we really had to go with the dates that those people could be available. So, farmers go everywhere for Farmer's Markets, so, these dates are the best for the farmers, and that's why we, um, went with them, and so, we're asking if we can please exempt the business license requirement for those people, because they're not all business people, they're just people who grow things in their backyard, some of them are business, but, uh, there are several of our biggest produce people that do have business license already in Sims. But it's more for the backyard people and the vendors, and a lot of these vendors are new to the area too, they don't, they have never been here before, so it's nice to see those new vendors come in, and it's nice to see the, uh, variety that goes well with the Farmer's Market, so, we're asking that you can exempt that.
I do wanna add that, um, I went to the past, with us past week, you know, I think you were out there, I heard, for taking pic, lovely pictures again, and, um, it was a huge success, it was a huge suc, it was a huge success, so, sorry, you gotta be choked up on that one. Um, it was, it was a huge success, but what we did, like, uh, Ms. Loveley said, we didn't know till the last minute we were gonna be able to do this, this Farmer's Market, because we had to come up with a plan, and the farmer said we're gonna do it in June, and we can only do it on Thursday, it was immediate, we need to hurry up and go ahead and put it together.
Right, it was like.
And so, we know one Thursday's already gone by, but we're asking the council to, to oversee that and to, uh, approve that tonight. I'm gonna open it up for a round of discussion, and then I'm gonna ask, like Councilmember Joyce said, for immediate consideration for approval tonight. All right, so discussion, Councilmember Joyce?
Um, well, first, thank you to our bank coordinator for putting all this together, especially short notice, um, yes, I was there taking some pictures, and it was a great, um, great success, I think, um, arriving at two o'clock, and it was already packed out, and then started at two, so.
Right.
Um, I, and it's something that, um, people have clamored for, so I think it's great, and it only makes sense to, um, since we do it for some of these other events that we have, uh, to give them an exemption, uh, the vendors an exemption in this.
There's Councilmember, Councilmember Harry?
Well, I think that this is just, uh, of course, a wonderful idea, and, uh, really good for that great community feel, um, and of course, thank you, Liz, for orchestrating it, and, uh, and reaching out to everybody to get, you know, all parties involved, and it's, I'm excited, unfortunately, I missed the first one, but I'm definitely gonna be at the second, for sure.
All right, she had different, there's several different meetings that I'll be at the next one.
Right. It's a variety, and I will say too, I know that the, the times have been somewhat in question, but that's also, we had to go by what the, the farmers were able to do, and so, we're just kinda leaving it, you know, in their hands at, at this point, and hoping that they come out and show lots to sell, so.
Yeah, we had a lot of people requesting on Saturday, but we couldn't do it on Saturday because most of the farmers that participated in ours had already been obligated, had already been obligated to other Farmer's Markets on Saturday, so, that's the reason why we didn't do ours on Saturday, I guess that was a little, right? Councilmember Eubry?
Uh, nothing much, but, uh, please take it, get it together, uh, you know, citizens and communities have been asking for this for a long time, and I'm glad we're able to go ahead and go forward with it, and hope to see more of it.
Councilmember Watts?
Good.
Councilmember Lawshe?
Looks like a good, funny turnout, I, I was, when he called me money.
He did.
They had a good variety of stuff to sell.
They did.
I get a shirt, he's like, push it. He's got his t-shirts on.
He goes on t-shirts.
Did any farmer stuff on them, like?
All right, so this time, after immediate consideration for approval of resolution C.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Joyce, same by Councilmember Harry, discussion on the current motion, Councilmember Joyce?
None.
Councilmember Harry? Councilmember Eubry?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Watts?
None.
Councilmember Lawshe?
None.
All right, Ms. Hanbury, we record the vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawshe?
Yes.
Mayor Van Hook?
Yes. All right, motion for immediate consideration has been approved. All right, now, do I have a motion to approve resolution C?
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Joyce, same by Councilmember Harry, discussion on the current motion, Councilmember Joyce?
None.
Councilmember Harry?
None.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Watts?
None.
Councilmember Lawshe?
None.
Ms. Hanbury, we record the vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yeah.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes.
Councilmember Harry?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawshe?
Yes.
Yes. Motion to approve resolution, resolution C has been approved. All right, next is resolution D, and raises follows, a resolution to award bidding contract to John G. Walton Construction Company Incorporated for construction work for the McCray Road project. Mr. Franklin, again, will present resolution D to this council.
All right, we've been waiting on this one for a couple of years.
Yep.
Yeah.
We have, and we have been here a long.
It's probably been a couple of years ago.
It is. It's probably been a couple of years ago, but anyway, a lot of snags along the way,
um, they got the thing designed, and, and then we found out about a grant, uh, uh, state of Alabama, so we applied for the grant, that process took six, eight months, got approved of the grant, um, which is good, and then we found out before we got ready to take out the contract that there was a lot of utilities in the way, uh, so companies had to move their, Alabama Power had to move their stuff, uh, A T and T went to move their stuff, and then found out their materials were on backboard for six months, so it's just been a long, ongoing process, but finally, we're in a place where we can go ahead and, uh, put it out for bid, well, we did go ahead and put it up for bid. Uh, we had three contractors bid it, and believe it or not, they were all within eight thousand dollars of each other, so I thought that's pretty good. The, uh, low bid was John G. Walton at four eighty-seven nine eight, nine sixty-eight, oh seven. Uh, the high bid was around four ninety-five, seven ninety-six, so, for that amount of money, that's a good, that's a good, uh, separation for just three of them, and the middle, the middle bid was about four ninety, so, all pretty close. Uh, John G. Walton's a reputable company, they've been in business a long time, they're a really good asset company, they've done some of the, uh, work, they've done some of the, uh, um, one fifty-eight projects, so they're, they're, they're a big, big player. Um, so, the process, if you guys approve the bid, um, it goes, uh, through contracts, and, uh, we do pre-construction meetings, things like that, and as soon as everything's good to go, we can send out a notice to proceed, so hopefully, once all the contracts are signed, we can do a seven day to ten day notice to proceed, and then we can get started. Um, so, uh, that's what we got here, if you look in, through your packet, you can see the bid tabulations are there, there's also a letter from Goodwood Mills in Kewood, which they're the engineer, um, they tabulated the bids, and they have recommended, uh, this company to be awarded as well. Um, also, in the, in the resolution, you'll see that the, uh, that the state of Alabama grant was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so, basically, the price of this will be the four eighty-seven, nine sixty-seven minus two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The good thing about this grant is, typically, in a grant situation, um, as the project work is being done, the contractor requests money, then we request money from Out of to reimburse us for that, so, it's kind of a back and forth process, but this, this grant, as soon as we award the bid, we can request the funds from Out of, and they'll give us a check for the full amount, and they allow us to, to handle the, the money, so it's a lot easier probably for fire cats.
Now, we have, um, this amount, we have already budgeted within, the council's already approved the budget for this amount out of the gas tax at the beginning of the fiscal year, so now, we're just asking for this council to approve the, um, contract that would, um, that would, to award the contract to the, uh, lowest bidder. Um, and I will point out, Jacob and Ms. Debbie on the, as the Councilmember Joyce has shown me on here, on the second page of the resolution, um, it says, and then, in the, um, parentheses, it has four hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven oh seven, and then right behind that says for construction work on the new public safety complex, we're gonna take that part out.
Not bad.
You're fine. Just that part needs to be removed.
Hey, also, I just noticed this, um, the, the letter from GMC says the website was four eighty-seven, nine sixty-eight oh seven, and, uh, resolution said forty-seven, nine sixty-seven, so, it's one dollar on it.
We changed that. We did change that.
Changed it.
Okay. Good, all right, I think it was Franklin, any, any other further discussion, Councilmember Joyce?
No, I think, um, time to, time to move forward, so, um, we're getting some funds to use, um, for it, and, um, I think to help that intersection, um, that's for sure. So, even though a turn lane, easy stop would be nice.
That should be good.
Yeah.
Yes.
In front of the C, C.
Yes.
Back to the.
Hard turn like on the wall.
Just get the.
On the wall, would be even better.
And do them to donate some of their park lot for a turn lane.
Exactly.
Or turning off of muffin on the wall, uh, wall would be even better, going, um, from west to east. Councilmember Harry?
No, I'm gonna, great to see this getting started.
Councilmember Eubry?
Not, not the photo.
Councilmember Watts?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lawshe?
I think a school bus would be great.
Yeah.
What about, are they, we sort of have a turn lane off of, I can't remember now, was this gonna be a turn lane actual off of McCray?
There will be for, for people that are, I think, uh, coming out of, uh, the gas, when they exit, when they exit. There's only the gas station they could turn right, right there.
All right, I think it was Franklin, sir. All right, that was, uh, resolution D, it'll be up for approval at Thursday night's regular session, and we'll get those, um, comments in that, um.
Correct.
That stuff fixed. All right, so, next is resolution E, and raises follows, a resolution authorizing expenditure of funds for the twenty twenty-two Independence Day celebration. Again, I'll ask Ms. Loveley to present resolution E to this council.
So, recently, we, um, accepted a grant from the Alabama Tourism Department, and I set out in search of the perfect performer, and I felt like Taylor Hicks, who won American Idol a couple of years ago, was that perfect person, he's, has that right vibe for the event, he's, has a lot of soul, he's lively and family friendly, and we are asking to, um, basically, sign a contract with Taylor Hicks for Independence Day. That's what this contract is about.
The amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars.
Yes.
It's worth his whole thing.
Right.
We had options to do him and another guy on the guitar, or the option for the, the whole band, we decided to go with the whole band, and then, remember, you want, go big or go home. Lord bless, we wanna advertise this to that, because in case we can't do it next year.
Right.
We want people to know that this is, some of the state has provided the funding for us to do, um, we're allowing, we're able to use the nineteen thousand five hundred dollars from this event, so half of the funding that we received, and honestly, like you said, we wanna go big, huh, big with it, and we wanna use it as an economic boost for our community, so we're, we wanna use this money to make more money, uh, tax base for our community that day, what better to bring in a performer, um, to help do that, so, um, you know, a reasonable price performer, 'cause the other ones, there's no way Sims can afford it. So, Taylor Hicks, season six winner of American Idol, uh, we have a contract, Jacob has looked at the contract, approved, approved the contract, and now we're asking the council to allow me to enter into a contract, to have, uh, him come out and sing on July second for our Independence Day celebration. All right, any discussion, Councilmember Joyce?
No, I think it's, um, great, and even better that it's the, uh, grant from the tourism department, and, um, and as you say, for economic development for that day, but also, I think, in the bigger picture, that Sims is actually doing things, you know, more reasons to stay in Sims, and, you know, that there are things to do fun, and, um, I think it's great.
Thank you. Councilmember Harry?
I think this is definitely, uh, some well spent, you know, funds that we've received, and, and, uh, I appreciate all the hard work going into, you know, preparing them, and I'm sure everybody's really gonna enjoy it as well.
That's up to you. Councilmember Eubry?
Yeah, uh, very much so, hopefully, we want a good bit of people to come in and spend money in Sims, and hopefully, this is the start of, you know, most stuff, especially if we get, you know, winning, we get the pavilion, you know, at municipal parks, you know, host most stuff like this for the citizens and the community of Sims, so, it'll be a great thing, great place, way to start off.
Councilmember Watts?
Nothing.
Councilmember Lawshe?
It's West Spalley on Sims, for sure.
Yay.
All right, resolution E will be up for approval at Thursday night's regular session. All right, next is resolution F. All right, resolution F raises follows, a resolution designating the National Incident Management System, N I M S, as the basis for all incident management in Sims, Alabama. You know, I'll ask Chief Brooks to present resolution F to this council. Chief?
Hey. Well, just a little background on, uh, Incident Command, we use that every day in the fire service, uh, it started out in the late seventies to deal with all wildfires in California, and, um, so it progressed, uh, after nine eleven, uh, we saw what that did, and all the agencies having to work together, and so, um, the federal government came up with And so, um, the federal government came up with the National Incident Management System, which, uh, provides a consistent nationwide approach to mitigate these large-scale incidents. Um, we've been doing this since, uh, the city's been incorporated, but we need to adopt it as a city. Uh, so, this is what this resolution is to adopt, uh, that we use the National Incident Management System for the city of Sims.
Thanks, chief.
Sure.
Alright, any discussion, Councilmember Joyce?
It makes, uh, sense to, uh, do it officially, even using it, and so, sounds good.
Councilmember Herring?
Sounds good.
Councilmember Eubry?
Not prepared.
Councilmember Watts?
Not prepared.
Councilmember Lauchy?
Sound good to me.
Thanks, chief.
Alright.
Stay right there. Alright, so that was Resolution G, right, and then Resolution F, so many of them, and that was. Alright, so Resolution F will be up for approval Thursday night's regular session. Next is Resolution G, and raises follows. This is a big one for us, a resolution to approve an agreement with Alabama Fire College with the city of Sims to serve as a regional fire training facility. Alright, chief, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm really excited about this, and, uh, I hope the council approves it. This is, um, something that we've been working on for about a year now. Uh, there's twenty-one regional training centers in the state of Alabama, there's three in Baldwin County, there's one in Muggil County, that's in, in the city of Muggil. Um, the fire colleges come down, they've done the evaluation of our facilities, they loved it, um, like Councilmember Joyce said. One of our things, one of the things that was lacking was our training staff, so that is the reason why we wanted to bring on Deputy Chief of Training. Um, this will just open up a lot of doors for our department as far as advanced training, but you can't get some of this advanced training anywhere else but an RTC. Um, it's not a moneymaker, we will make some money, we will get thirty percent of the cost of a class, uh, if we deem it as an RTC. But it's, it's for recruitment, it's for helping the volunteers, it's supporting the Muggil Regional Training Center, which is a huge, um, facility over there. So, um, this is an agreement, it's a three-year agreement, uh, from, um, now till, um, April twen, uh, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, we can cancel it at any time, um, with some notice, but, um, it, it's, it's something that, uh, I think will put us on the map as far as the fire service in the state of Alabama, and, uh, and I, I hope you all approve it.
Um, I know you've been working on this for a while, so it's, it's great for you, you know, your, your hard work's come to, um, to this, so we're excited about it. Um, and like chief said, there's no, it's not, it's not really moneymaker for us, but we're not losing any money on it either. Um, it's a win-win for us, we can use it for attainment, uh, we can use it for recruitment, and it's just another step to move our fire department in the right direction, in the direction where the chief sees it going. So, I'm excited about it, I'm excited about our public safety complex, I'm excited about hiring, uh, a Deputy Chief, um, Training Officer. Um, I'm excited about it all, it's, it's, it's a, it's a good day. Councilmember Joyce?
Um, thank you, chief. Uh, the chief has, has kept our Public Safety Committee, um, up to date, going through this, because this has been going on for a while, and so, um, and I know that he's worked hard to, um, to get this, and, uh, um, I think it's a great, um, great thing for our fire department and for training, and that, um, you know, especially considering only one other that's in Muggil, um, that they gotta come to Sims. And so, uh, you know, whether it's, uh, Taylor Hicks singing on the Fourth of July, or, um, um, you know, fire departments coming and using, um, coming to Sims and, uh, using our, uh, facilities, I think it's great. And thank you to the chief for all, all that he does now.
Councilmember Herring?
Chief, I appreciate your hard work in, um, in orchestrating this and, uh, getting everything brought together. It's, um, you know, I, I, I know you're really excited about it as well, of course, but it's gonna be, um, you know, just as mayor and, uh, and everyone said, it's gonna be great for retention and everything along the line, and then, of course, just for, um, you know, just bringing people, you know, other firefighters to Sims and seeing what would happen, maybe we can collect a few extra in the process.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yeah, it's just, I send it, you know, both send it for that, you know, training center, we've got SEDALAN that uses it, all the training, I think some other cities, he told me he's used this, you know, on and off. And it's just that way, they can come and actually get certified training now, except just using the facility to get, you know, train for training at all the facilities. So, it's a money saving for everybody to have it done here locally, thank you.
Councilmember Watts?
Good job.
Councilmember Lauchy?
Well, it sounded like a good thing, and if it'll improve Sims, and then, you can't go wrong that way.
Thanks, chief.
Alright.
Good job. Alright, that was Resolution G. Alright, that will be up for approval Thursday night's regular session. Alright, next is Resolution H, and raises follows. Authorization for the expenditure of funds for televisions and mounting equipment for the public safety facilities and new city hall. Obviously, this is self-explanatory, this money was not budgeted, so we have to bring it to council for approval. These are for, you know, TVs for, um, public safety complex, and a couple of them will be utilized in city hall. Um, the reason that we're bringing it up tonight is that our, we have the guys out there now, um, Rayco, is that correct? And they're ready to mount, so they're more ready to order. So, after discussion tonight, I will be asking for immediate consideration for approval. Alright, any discussion, like I said, it's self-explanatory, this is for five fifty-inch TVs and one eighty-two-inch TV. Um, the fifty-inch TVs will be scattered between the two buildings, and the eighty-two-inch TV will be in the day room on the fireside. Alright, discussion, Councilmember Joyce?
No, I think, uh, self-explanatory, and, um, need it, so, look forward.
Thank you, Councilmember, Councilmember Herring?
Sounds good.
Councilmember Eubry?
Not prepared.
Councilmember Watts?
Not prepared.
Alright, Councilmember Lauchy?
Sound good to me.
Alright, we have a motion for immediate consideration to approve Resolution H.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Joyce, saying by Councilmember Eubry. Alright, discussion on the current motion, Councilmember Joyce?
None.
Councilmember Herring?
None.
Councilmember Eubry?
Not prepared.
Councilmember Watts?
None.
Councilmember Lauchy?
None.
Ms. Handbury, will you record the vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yeah.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauchy?
Yes.
Mayor Van Hook?
Yes. Alright, motion for, to approve immediate consideration has been approved, now I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve Resolution H.
Second.
Motion made by Councilmember Joyce, saying by Councilmember Herring. Alright, any discussion with Councilmember Joyce?
None.
Councilmember Herring?
None.
Councilmember Eubry?
Not prepared.
Councilmember Watts?
None.
Councilmember Lauchy?
None.
Alright, Ms. Handbury, will you record the vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yeah.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauchy?
Yes.
Mayor Van Hook?
Yes. Alright, motion to approve Resolution H has been approved. Alright, council, leave council staff comments, or I ask for additional comments, I'm gonna ask this council to go into executive session. So, at this time, I'll refer to Mr. Fuller for executive session in connection.
Uh, we, the executive session is proper for the purpose of council and city attorney to discuss pending litigation.
Alright, motion, motion to, executive session made by Councilmember Joyce, saying by Councilmember Herring. Alright, any discussion, Councilmember Joyce?
None.
Councilmember Herring?
None.
Councilmember Eubry?
No.
Councilmember Watts?
None.
Councilmember Lauchy?
None.
Alright, Ms. Handbury, will you record the vote?
Councilmember Watts?
Yeah.
Councilmember Eubry?
Yes.
Councilmember Herring?
Yes.
Councilmember Joyce?
Yes.
Councilmember Lauchy?
Yeah.
Mayor Van Hook?
Yes, motion to approve executive session has been approved, the time is now six thirty-seven, we will reconvene shortly, folks, thank you. Jason and chief, will you join us, please, Ms. Mary?